This will be a regular meeting of Hennessy Town Board of Trustees, April 13th, 2023. Roll call please.
Richard. Cliff.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
David.
Here.
Okay, item two's report from the Hennessy United Board. I don't know that, uh, I don't know that we've really done much. When is Red Carpet?
Next Thursday night.
Next Thursday, a week from tonight.
As the auditorium, I mean, for the library.
Library and auditorium, okay. All right.
Hey there, everybody's looking at me.
You're fine. Anything else we need to bring up? Is there anything else we need to bring up for Hennessy United?
I don't remember it.
Okay. All right, consider approval of the consent agenda. Minutes of the March meetings. Approval of claims as follows. March purchase orders, 11,356. April purchase orders, 58,67123. April restricted sales tax fund, 24,13389. April library fund, 90628. April street and alley fund, 348793. And accept the following reports, treasurer, library, please. If there's no corrections to the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion for approval. Second, roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Okay, most of office. We had to get last month's business approved before we could swear in and see. You administering this?
You two want to come up here? Give me some over here, can you face you?
Yes, sir.
Good idea.
Face you.
Yeah. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
I. Say your name.
Clifford Vote.
And you want to sit.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And then I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable things.
And I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing.
For the purpose or non-purpose of any act or duty.
For the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as. Clifford Vote.
Steve.
Town trustee, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Amen.
Sorry, you're reading.
No, you're fine. I figured as much.
Kelly, before you sit down, would you come up? It's your first certificate.
Oh, yay.
This is a certificate of election from the county election board, State of Oklahoma.
Okay.
Let me get a picture of that. There we go, just like that. There we go. Very nice.
Did you pull yours out? Yeah.
Okay, most of all, Chris.
No.
Okay. Next item is nominate and elect mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Clifford Vote for mayor.
What if someone, what if another board member has someone they want to nominate?
We can take a vote and then, uh, and then another nomination can be heard.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second on Cliff being mayor.
Roll call.
Okay, Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Okay, we also were supposed to have on the agenda to elect a vice mayor. That didn't make it on the agenda. I had talked to our town attorney today and he said we would be fine to just do that at the next regular meeting. So I will swap places with you. Does this mean I get to wear your hat?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I lowered that chair a little down there. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. No, I hope I can do half as good as Bert did on doing the, there's, uh, trust me, that won't be hard. I will try to be the best mayor that you can have, so. Now I'm all nervous and everything. Citizen comments? If I see any town administration report, please.
For purchasing, we had an upgrade to iWork, our iWork app for the code enforcement and permit management. The additions or the upgrade will facilitate being able to properly give out notes, notices, and even tickets on the code enforcement side. And permit management will just facilitate any building permits and stuff like that. Lifeguard uniforms and safety equipment were purchased also last month. The REAP project, that water line on Dunlap, the, went up for bids, uh, March 22nd, and they were posted online and put in the Kingfisher Times. The bids will be accepted tomorrow, 10:00 a.m., tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. The CDBG drainage project is doing according to schedule. Brian and Jennifer were talking on emails and he said it's about 50%. So it's actually probably a little bit ahead of schedule. The water plant RO restoration project for RO number one is completed. David, actually Great Works Construction, did that, did a great job. I went out there and looked at it today. Have you guys got a chance to look at that? Have you, did you see the old RO? I took pictures of the new one and he fixed a wall that was out there too. He passed it down. He did a great job on it. It looks a lot sturdier than it was. I think where they fixed it up, it could last quite a while. He did a really, really good job. We had three building permits last month. The tire shop that's going to grow in north of Howdy's, a manufactured home for Kelly Choak, and a fence for Stacey Boggs. The attorney is still working on the RV sewer dump ordinance, I believe. He hasn't gotten back with me about anything on that yet. But he did, we do have a draft for the food truck ordinance and he did complete also Brent Brunner's severance contract. Brent's looked at it and he's tentatively agreed to it, but according to the attorney, he has to wait 21 days before he can sign it, so we'll get that taken care of. And he was, he was very happy and they had a little party for his, for him and Ronnie. And please really thank him, he did a good job.
Okay, thank you.
I delay other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following discussion with possible action to appoint a deputy clerk. I would like to make a motion to.
I've got some discussion on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry for buttoning in, not trying to be disrespectful. The item reads to appoint a deputy clerk. Shouldn't we have a job description and put this out as a job announcement where people can apply for it? Or do you guys already have somebody in mind that you want to appoint without it being competitive?
I have somebody in mind. It's not a, it's not a paying position, so.
Oh, it's a volunteer position?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, to be honest with you, that was another one of my follow-up questions is what the salary would be.
I'm correct in that, aren't I? Correct me if I'm wrong.
What?
That the deputy clerk's a volunteer position.
Yeah, it's just solely to where if the clerk is absent, that the meetings can still go on.
Okay, Bert, that's all the discussion I have on that item.
I was just going to make a motion to appoint Katie Walters if she's planning to accept that.
I'll second that.
I'll start saying roll call.
Roll call, please.
If I step on you, hit me.
Okay, Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Thank you, Katie.
The discussion with possible action to approve food truck ordinance.
Does that not matter?
I didn't have it at the time of making packets. Is it, will we have it now?
Yes, yes, I do.
Here's a couple, I'm making more copies.
Making share. Have you seen it?
I brought by him.
This town attorney has been working on this for a while. And I visited with him two or three times over the last week concerning this. He left blank a license fee or annual renewal. He wanted us to decide on that. It's just a draft, so it's not, not exactly, I don't think, ready to pass. It doesn't have a limits number yet, I think to. He put in here that it could be, we could sell a permit either on a daily or annual basis so that a food truck vendor that comes in can purchase one on a daily basis or an annual basis. So we would need, if we pass this, we would need to determine those daily or annual rates. I was, I was sort of just thinking through my head, thinking, and you guys in the food service probably, correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be way off. But I figured if a food truck came to town and had a thousand dollar day, that would be a pretty good day. And our sales tax on that part would be around $45. So I was thinking a $50 daily fee. But I may be off on what I'm estimating their sales, maybe I have enough for it.
Do we know what it is in other places?
Ten customers will be a thousand bucks. Ten customers will be a thousand dollars.
It's under $100.
What?
Where can I get on that?
You're too, you're too used to the sounding. You know, because, you know, but really an average ticket would be really actually probably $25 a person.
Uh, well, I know our current, I can tell you exactly what our average ticket is right now. So, any second, I'll tell you.
Because usually you're going to go have two people. Yes, ma'am.
Do they have to have a health certificate or something in addition to this certification?
Yes.
Last week's average ticket was 1782.
1782, per person.
That's per ticket.
Per ticket.
Yeah. That's on average. And that's judging at, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was yesterday's, the 12th. See, yesterday. It was 1782 and that was with 92 yes. So that was a pretty hurtful day. I can tell you what a week usually, I can give you a good average on a week, any second.
So one of the top, like the bus that sits up here full-time, do they have to pay?
No, in this, and that is something I'd like for us to address.
Eighteen thirty. Eighteen thirty week average.
Let me tell you what it prohibits. Well, first let me tell you what it requires. And I didn't mean to just take this over, but I've been visiting with the attorney. A permit would require their name, address, and contact info, duration of the license, whether it was daily or annually. Vehicle description and tag numbers, location of proposed use, nature of the food and/or beverages being sold, certification that the applicant has not been denied and licensed to operate as a mobile food vendor in any community, certification that the applicant has not previously had a mobile food vending license revoked or suspended in any community, a copy of the applicant's Oklahoma sales tax permit, a copy of the applicant's Oklahoma State Health Department permit, and any additional information required by the town. It goes on to say, uh, that we'll issue the license upon completion of complete application. All applicants licensed as mobile food vendors shall collect town's municipal sales tax on any sale of food or beverage within the municipality and properly report to the Oklahoma Tax Commission on any tax collected within the Hennessy town limits. Their limitations are they shall not park a mobile food vehicle on private property without permission, park a mobile food vehicle within a residential neighborhood, park a mobile, this is hard to say, a mobile food vehicle within 100 feet of any public or private school except when authorized in writing by the school, park a mobile food vehicle with 100, within 100 feet of an existing restaurant, cafe, or other eating establishment, park a mobile food vehicle within 100 feet of a special event staged on public property unless licensee has been pre-approved by town administrator. Uh, the exclusions, uh, these are the people who can be exempt. Any mobile food vendor located and operating on private property owned by the same mobile food vendor shall be exempt. Any mobile food vendor located and operated on property within 200 feet of a commercial kitchen or any restaurant, cafe, or other eating establishment owned by the same mobile food vendor shall be exempt. And then it goes into the license fees.
Do I need to check the layout here, that the bank wouldn't be able to park there?
Correct.
So I've got a question on that. You're saying 100 feet. I just did a measurement from Family Cafe to basically the Interbank parking lot. If they park at the halfway point of Interbank parking lot, that's fine. That's 100 feet.
Well, and that's one of the things I feel like we should expand the distance on there. I mean, that's up to the pleasure of the board, but I feel like we should expand the distance. I also, it restricts any local from, it requires them to have a license unless they're within 200 feet of their establishment. And I would like to see that changed as well, because if Sarah starts up a food truck and wants to take it to. Okay, if Tony wants to start a food truck, whatever, but if a local wants to take their food truck, say to Bullfoot Park for some event.
Eat it up.
Yeah. Eat it up's got one, yeah. Which she could park it with, with this, she could park it any time in front of her building because she's still operating out of that building. But if she wanted to go to Bullfoot Park, she would have to get a license. My personal thoughts are people that are paying sales tax in Hennessy, paying property taxes to our county, and maintaining a brick and mortar building here in town, I think should be exempt. That's my thoughts.
What about your snow cone?
That's what I was gonna ask.
What about your snow cone stand? They definitely don't make pretty much food.
They what?
They surely don't make that much food.
They can make quite a bit, depending. I know a lot of the foods that are in that snow cone stands, you know, summers run usually make anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000, if you're talking about three and a half to four months.
I'll be grinding ice tart in the morning.
Yeah, it's actually low, it's low cost of bits on it.
Because our son sold to Laverne and Missy Strible, she sold hers to Laverne, Oklahoma. And Missy Strible sold theirs to Guy in Barber. So we don't have a snow cone stand anymore.
Well, we might have someone mobile, want to come in?
I'm interested.
If they pay city taxes and, again, if they're a resident here and they pay, then they should be exempt.
I think so too, and I don't know, we may have to work with the attorney on the wording with that.
Because you won't have a brick and mortar.
No. But I still feel like they should be exempt.
I do agree.
I feel like if a Hennessy resident wants to put one in and move it around town, I, what do you guys think?
I wanted to make a comment on the snow cone thing. Last year at the car show, I was doing a fundraiser for the Lions Club. We were raffling off a rifle, if you guys remember that. And we set up a booth right next to the snow cone location, the snow cone trailer. And I was amazed at, they had a line before the snow cone trailer even opened. And the line was there all day long. They never did get rid of their line. And they actually had to close with people standing there. So I'm telling you, there's no telling how much money that snow cone booth made that, that day. And I don't know who they were. I didn't take the time to go over and talk to them. But it was, it was pretty awesome. And I think that was a very good fundraiser for whoever was doing it. And I, you know, in other words, my point is, is that we need to, I think we need to keep the snow cone people in, in mind as we, as we process this.
Yeah. So another. If we had, what if we asked the attorney to put in this ordinance, instead of operating with so many feet, if you had a ID showing you're resident of Hennessy and a Hennessy utility bill, they would be exempt.
And about the snow cones only, the snow cone stand only?
Well, I think I mean on the food trucks, because.
So, so in this ordinance, it says you cannot operate in a residential neighborhood. Now, in the summertime, they have that ice cream truck that drives through the residential streets. So that's, does this still count?
No, it's not considered a food truck though, they're not in the same type of.
Well, that's what I wanted to, wasn't sure if we would consider them in the same thought process as the rest of this.
Randy, I think we would, because it says, uh, one of the things that qualifies under this is any motorized vehicle used to sell food or beverages. And that's food and beverages.
But what's parked? But what's parked? They ain't parked, they're not driving down the street. They're not parked.
Well, I know, but it says motorized.
They're still operating inside of city, city limits.
In the past, have they notified the town that they're coming to town? I was wondering if they've ever had to talk to anyone or if they're just welcome to drive through.
Right now, Rachel, we don't have anything making.
Sure, they would just pay their taxes staying their cells or in Kingfisher County.
What, and what, how the sales tax by law is supposed to work is you pay sales tax at your point of delivery.
Right.
So any food they're delivering within the town limits of Hennessy, Hennessy's supposed to get sales tax?
That's self-reporting.
That's very difficult for us to monitor, which is why we were looking at this. Because if a food truck has a brick and mortar store in Enid, they come down here and set up, probably for convenience, they're going to report those sales with Enid.
Right, because that's a monthly reporting online, yeah, yeah. Well, I looked online and it says from the Oklahoma State Department of Health, a license that they have would be $100 for three days, $40 for each additional day. I don't know, what did you say at first?
50 a day.
So, just for us.
And maybe an annual 200 or 250, I don't know. I don't know.
So when they bring the food trucks in for the meet the eagle and all that, that's going to be considered? They all have to just pay for their permits to come in for that, correct?
Yeah, if they're on school property, they also have to have written.
Written permissions.
From the school. Which that can be just an easy, you know, template.
Which I think is a good idea, I'm glad the attorney put that in there, because he and I didn't discuss this until somebody did, but I think that's a good addition, because you don't want somebody setting up right outside. right outside the fence at a football game selling hot dogs for half of what they are at the concession stand.
But like, like that deal at, like at, at school, you know, like when they have the softball tournaments and stuff like that, they have groups, cheerleaders or whatever inside them deals cooking. Are we charging them permits?
It's a concession stand?
If it's a school's concession?
No, like, uh, like when they had that softball tournament there last year, I think it was the ten and under, twelve and under softball girls ran that one concession stand by the school. So are you charging them, are we gonna charge them for their fundraisers? If they're doing to try to raise money for their team? I mean, cause it's a food.
It doesn't fall under food, uh, mobile food vendor at that point.
Huh?
It doesn't fall under a mobile food vendor at that point.
But they're cooking.
But it's not a vehicle.
A cooking theoretically, they're actually supposed to have an Oklahoma health license if they're selling any type of food. That's either hot or cold, not covered under the cottage act.
We haven't said that.
They're running a concession stand out of a trailer. But this past tournament, they are actually running a concession stand out of the concession stand in the high school building now that they got it built. They were running it out of a trailer until the concession stand was built. But this last tournament, it literally was ran out of the concession stand.
I feel if it's profiting the school and their organizations, they should be exempt from it. I mean, it's fundraiser, it's for the better, it's for the better good. It's not for them to put in their pockets and, you know, go home with.
And I feel like it's, it's on their property. And it's, it's, it's also themselves doing it, so I feel like.
What they're gonna do is they have a bake sale and it's sitting right out here in front of them.
It's fundraiser. As long as I think the, the fundraiser for a event like a cheerleader, football, whatever sport should be exempt.
Yeah, if it's a school function type fundraiser, that's, that's really, that really doesn't come after the restaurant, really. In fact, a lot of those restaurants usually donate to it. It'd be all answered.
Exactly.
How many times a year are we having mobile food trucks coming from elsewhere where the residents aren't here? Do we know? How many, what have profit?
I don't know. Like the Chick-fil-A truck that was in Interbank.
Was brought this up?
Was here for probably every two weeks for three times maybe.
And they didn't have to pay for a permit because there was nothing?
There was nothing in place.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Now, we've never allowed them for the wine and chocolate festival in our festival area. I mean, we can't stop them from having it.
And this, you bring up a very good point because this will not allow them within one hundred feet of a special event unless approved by the town administrator. Wine and chocolate would fall under as a special event. Car show would fall under as a special event. The attorney and I talked about that and, cause he said, where is the car show? And I said, pretty much the entire length of Main Street. And he said, well, that, that would cover you then. Because until we get this ordinance, even though Hennessy United is restricting or the car show's restricting uh, food trucks from their events, if they wanna come in on a public street, we don't have anything to stop them. And this will put some teeth into that. So that's one of our, I think that was one of our original goals of doing this.
Well, it's gonna help out the town. At least it's going to, the problem is that we need to inject money in the back of the town. A lot of these food trucks will come back, come into town and they're coming out from Enid or whatsoever. And that's taking the money flow from our town outside of our town. Yes, we get a little bit of the tax revenue off of it, but in general, it takes it back out of the town. And that's one of the reasons with the car show, we did the whole, you know, no food trucks. Not only does it help the restaurant out, it helps the town out in itself because it's injecting new money from outside of our small ec- you know, economy and growing it. If we don't inject new money into our economy here, we're gonna get stagnant or failing. It's just, that's just how economics work. You don't inject new money, it, it, it fails.
But the bottom, the bottom line telling me is that the car show or the wine festival, either one, can say we don't want food trucks, but if they come, there's not, there is nothing we can do to back it up. And this would give us.
Correct.
A, a law or an ordinance to, to prohibit that.
I know in Enid first Friday this year, they decided to say no food trucks and it was a huge uproar up there and it, um, they have ordinances where you can get a permit for any other day but that special event, so. I think that's good that we, hmm.
A lot of towns actually start to have.
And it may be that the attorney is, is going to, I was gonna have him here tonight and they were actually meeting in their office today and I said, never mind, maybe I should have had him here. But, uh, I think we get back to him if we get all this figured out and have him draft an ordinance that, that has these things in it. Uh, the addition of school fundraisers being one of those. I too think that's exempt whether, you know, and obviously the ten and under little league team then gonna have a utility bill.
Maybe the wording needs to be if you have a health license, you know, Oklahoma health license. Most of your fundraisers don't, most, so that's, you know, it's under the cottage, you know, food act. So cottage food means that it's cooked somewhere else, repackaged, and then brought here. It's not needed to be cold, it's not be allowed to, it, it doesn't need to be hot. It can be served at room temperature or temperature that's around it. So if they have to have a food license, you know, they're actually having to cook it on site, keep it hot or cold. That would be kinda one of those things and, in all honesty, if the concession stands cooking hot dogs or whatever, in all reality, they're supposed to have an Oklahoma health license at that point and be checked by the Oklahoma Health Department. So, I mean.
Yeah, but I don't think we can res- we can make that as one of the, cause any outside food truck coming from another city is probably gonna have a state health license.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If they have to have a state health license, then they have to have a permit. And that would be an easy blanket all, because most of your fundraisers, you know, they don't have to have a health license because one, that most of it's, you know, baked goods, you know, brownies, cakes, things long in that future. And that's what they sell to go ahead and do these type of things. They're made inside their homes, prepackaged and brought to the table. And it's covered under the cottage act.
Well, what about like, um, like when Caleb brings his big cooker in and uses it for a fundraiser? That's cooking on site.
Theoretically, he's supposed to have an Oklahoma health license. Cause he is serving and charging, if you're charging for food, you're supposed to have an Oklahoma health license. That's, that is the law. I hate saying it like that, and I have nothing against them whatsoever, you know? I, I wanna help these, you know, kids out, but by law, they have to have one.
I don't think they pass the health inspection because you have to be enclosed.
Exactly.
You can't have a smoker and be out in the open and then sell to the public. That's illegal.
Yeah.
What about, uh, people that cook and take donations for their food, not charge for the food?
So if they're not charging for the food, it doesn't follow, it doesn't fall under the Oklahoma Health Department. Because you're not actually selling, you're, you're basically giving it away. That's how the fire department gets away with it, it's by donating all money.
And the first, if they're doing it by donation, we take in about five times as much money by donation as.
Exactly.
I mean, it's huge. It really is.
And the thing is, is since you guys do it by donation, you don't actually have to have a license.
Okay? I hadn't even thought about that, to be honest with you.
Burton, I want to say thank you for doing a lot of work at this with attorney. If you could take these ideas with you and talk to the attorney some more and, you know, like we talked about the, uh, ice cream truck and we're talking about the snow cones. If you could, and, uh, brick and mortar and having the town people that are have brick and mortar, those sort of things, I would like to.
And give, give me a, give me a fee to put in this.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty a day, how much per year?
Two fifty.
Yeah.
Does that work for a minute?
Two hundred and fifty a day. Or two fifty for a year.
So if they're gonna pay five times during a year more by an annual permit, I guess that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
What do you think, Harold?
Just one question, do you wanna do a weekend deal for one and a quarter? Do a Friday, Saturday, Sunday deal? Just, just to say, just something to throw out there? I'm sorry?
So.
I'd say they could buy a fifty dollar permit.
But if you say two fifty, is that how many times can they come for that two hundred and fifty?
Throughout the year.
If you look at it, it's pretty cheap.
But I was saying they can just park there for the rest, and be there naked, you know? For two hundred and fifty bucks, it could be.
I say just have a daily permit. Don't have the annual, no.
Well, if we're gonna exempt anyone from Hennessy, I think that's going to incentivize anybody from Hennessy, but also keep, keep it fair for anyone coming from out of town. Because then we're keeping more money in the town rather than it leaving.
So is the dollars high enough?
So then do away with the annual.
Yeah, fifty dollars a day.
Fifty, fifty dollars a day and then no annual fee.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Because if we're going to exempt Hennessy residents with a utility bill, is that still what we were?
Right.
We talked about that.
Utility bill.
So then, you know, we're, we're keeping, I, I don't, I don't see a need for an annual, that's just gonna incentivize more people from coming and being here two or three days a week.
The exemption also goes towards if you have a brick and mortar store here, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Sound like me, we're having a lot of people. Just do it by donation and call it. I come in here and sit up and make a phone call. That's all I want, I want donated to, to the funders. Rest of it costs my cost. What can you do about stuff like that?
What was that Harold adding here?
Well, I, I think a food vendor, Harold, with a truck, if I was running one, I'd rather pay the fifty dollars and get a permit than run it by donation and take a chance on nobody donating, so.
So I have a question about the Reserve Angels because we do the pork butts. So can we write a thirty-five dollar donation for your pork butt?
Cheryl, you're getting into legal questions.
I'm just asking because without that, we won't have Reserve Angels. That's our only fundraiser we do.
See, when it comes down to food and whatnot, you can't actually put, like, if you're saying donation, you can't actually put a number on the donation is a problem. Otherwise, Oklahoma Health Department is caught. So if you say that, okay, you know, you could put a suggested donated, I'm out.
And if you don't pay, you don't get it.
Well, you can't.
I mean, I'm just asking because.
Let me talk to the attorney, uh, cause possibly you could establish a minimum donation?
I don't know.
Yeah, you could, I'm, well.
Yeah, you might get more than your forty bucks if you did that. Minimum donation, forty dollars, whatever.
That might help you anyway, cause some people might give a hundred.
Yeah, you might even give more actually. I have a look.
Were you asking them? In that way, we're clear now. Do you mind?
Okay, so we're gonna table that for now. We're gonna hurry along. We are on C, uh, discussion with possible action to review and consider the job description for town administrator as presented by O M M S.
If I have a question?
Yes, sir.
On this item? Uh, I see the, uh, job description discussion for town administrator. Uh, David also sent out a job description for the public works director.
That's on the other agenda.
There's an add-on.
It's on the other agenda?
Yep. Public Works has to go under the water agenda.
My bad. I'm good now.
Hey, Joel, Danny. Patience.
I get it. I get it.
Should I read it?
No, you don't have to.
Sorry, Cliff.
No, no, that's fine.
I normally ask some fairly decent questions.
Yeah, it's really very good.
Can I go ahead and? Yes, a discussion on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't have asked them first. About to have a motion first? No, go ahead, Dave.
Okay. I, I'm trying to be constructive here. Uh, I'm not trying to, you know, take over on this and, and I'm not demanding anything. I'm trying to just communicate with you guys. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at the town administrator job description. And if you guys, if you guys remember back, I don't know how many meetings ago, but I, I threw out, I tossed out that, you know, I wanted to discuss a, a public works director. And we really haven't, we really haven't done that. I'm talking about the board members. We haven't discussed that. And as we're working these, this, this job description, both of them, we, we need to make the decision, are we or are we not going to hire a public works director? Cause if we're not, then we need to take all this public works director stuff and put it into the, to the town administrator stuff to have that one person in charge of everything. Now, here's my opinion. I think that we need a public works director. And when I say that, I mean, somebody, I'm not an expert on it myself, the topic that I'm gonna bring up, but, uh, I want to talk about, uh, we need somebody that knows how to shoot a transit to mathematically calculate our grades, our drops and our, and our sewage pipes, for an example. Uh, that's just one example. Uh, we need somebody, uh, I'm not saying we need an engineer to do that and pay them engineer rates. I'm saying we need a, a, a very smart, intelligent high school graduate that has worked construction for several years that knows how to do what we need done. And also has the ability to supervise our employees that work not inside town hall but outside on our, on our, you know, on our public works. Another, my, another point I have is, uh, another point I have is, is sometimes I think that the term town administrator is a little bit, uh, it sounds to most normal people, most, most people that I've actually talked to about it, is, uh, the town administrator sounds like a very powerful job title. Okay, can I get by with saying that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I've been trying to come up with a, a couple of three different job titles that we could possibly consider. One of them being, uh, town business manager. That would go along with the public works director. A lot better than a town administrator and a public works director. And that's, that's my next point is I feel like the ta- the, uh, town business manager and the public's work, the public works director should answer directly to us. And we should not have one of them reporting to the other or vice versa. Does that make sense?
Right.
So we would have a two-person team running everything in town instead of having a one person trying to cover all the work that's involved. And I think we could, if we got the right people, if we hired the right people with the right skills and the right attitude, we could, we could dramatically improve some stuff uh, that, that, that we need to improve upon. And I'm looking at the town business manager, town administrator job description. If you guys go down on the front of it, if you go down to the third from the bottom, receives, investigates, and responds to citizen complaints and coordinates with appropriate departments, boards, or committees to resolve the issue successfully. Well, one of the things that I learned over my lifetime, traveling around and working for the government, is that an organization that services people, you need to, you need to set up a customer service. is that an organization that services people, you need to, you need to set up a customer service philosophy. And you need to get that philosophy ingrained in all of your employees. And if you do that, you're gonna minimize your complaints. You won't eliminate all of the complaints, but you will be able to minimize them. And in other words, you're working problems in advance before they're complained about. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's another attribute that, uh, let, let's just say I get in my way, and we get, we're gonna hire a business manager and a public works director. We want those two people to have the attributes of, uh, uh, customer service, including us. We would be customers walking in. Uh, and I'll compliment David, he's, he's, he's been our temporary, uh, town administrator. Every time I ask him something, he goes out of his way to get me an answer. And I really appreciate that, and that's, that's what I'm talking about here. And, and we need to make sure, if and when we decide what we're gonna do with these two positions, we need to make sure that we try to hire somebody that can elevate customer service on a daily basis, both inside town hall and outside town hall. That's all I'll say for now.
David, I've got a question for you. Well, one statement, you said that if we, we need to know now if we hire both. I think one addition to this job description on public works director could be that in absence of the public works director, those duties would fall on the town administrator. So that that would happen. My question is, if we want to title this job as a business manager, who then? I mean, to me, that's the accounting, the cash flows, and that sort of thing. Who then is actually over the police chief, the, uh, employees, and all of that?
Okay. This, this is just my opinion, and, and here's what I say, and here's, here's what I think, and here's what I'll say. My opinion, we should have, uh, the town administrator, the public works director, the police chief, fire chief, answer directly to us, the board.
So, you're advocating then that the board more or less operate the town on a day-to-day basis?
Well, that's not what I said, but I guess you would have to, you would have to agree that we would be in a much, a more active role than we are right now. But, uh, again, I'm only talking about, the, the people answering to us would be the, the, uh, business manager, and the public works director, fire chief, police chief. And they would, they would, all their people would answer to them. Uh, the business manager, of course, would have the people here in town hall.
What about the library?
Uh.
The parks department, well, I guess the parks department comes under the.
Yeah, I, I see your point, Ms. Barb.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess the library would probably need to fall under the business manager. But, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to tell you guys this, and, and, you know, I can, I'd be more than willing to negotiate with you, compromise with you. Uh, I just, uh, I just think we're in an opportunity here to get the right people in place. And, and if we make the right decisions and get the right people, we're gonna be able to make some, some improvements in the way we've been doing business.
I feel like the town administrator title, if that implies a position of power, uh, I've never personally thought of it that way. To me, it tells the public that that is more or less the CEO of the company. And I like that. I like for there to be one person. We in the past have had a public works director and town administrator with equal power, and that simply did not work well. I feel like when we have one boss in charge, that boss reports to us as a board, not individually.
I think, I think the fire chief, the chief of police, town administrator, and your public service director, it actually, to me, is one of your four main cause of, of the town. The person that they should answer to is us five board members, because we are the ones elected by the people.
But who answers to us? The town administrator. So, if there is an issue, then we deal directly with the town administrator.
We don't deal directly with the issue of, like, the police department, or the fire department, or, which we, I mean, I'm just saying, we haven't had problems, but, you know, you, going down.
No, but let me, let me tell you that Tiffany took care of a lot of problems within each of the departments that.
And you don't make any.
That you have mentioned, that didn't have to come to us in a board meeting.
But they're all, they're all gonna work together, and they're gonna, you know, at, at the end of the year, they're gonna sit down, and they're gonna write a budget. And they're gonna work within their budget, other departments. But we got one person, we got one person hiring three people, you know, she gets to choose who the fire chief's gonna be, she gets to choose who the chief of police is, she's gonna be able to check, and choose who the, uh, public service director is, and none of us had a say in it.
Well, I think we can decide that, uh, I'm not sure, I started by, I think we can decide who.
That's what, you know, that's what.
Who that the town administrator can hire. But if everybody answers to him or her, then I feel like him or her should have the hiring and dismissing ability for those positions.
I think what you're trying to say maybe is you're wanting to check some balances, because if one person holds so much power, which sometimes is needed, there can be, for so long, too, also, there can become a superiority, or I've got all the power type of feeling, whenever you are the board members. I get that. So, for example, um, I make a complaint, I've had this happen to me, you know, um, I would make a complaint to Tiffany, and personally, I would feel that it didn't go to the person that's well-versed in that. And Tiffany would answer that question not knowing the answers that I'm seeking. And she would rather answer that, being in charge, not every time. I do believe she would reach out to certain departments, but it would be like a, a specific complaint, and she would answer that, or not answer that, either or. And I'm like, Tiffany, I understand you know a little bit about that, because you, you know, deal with that stuff, but I wanna speak to the person in charge. You know, um, you know, I want it to, I guess I wanna hear it from, you know, if I have a problem with the fire department, I wanna hear it from the chief of police, but you can't, do you directly go to the chief of police, or do you email Tiffany, which is what I would have done, which I did, you know, about something or something? And I wanna, you know, we had a meeting one time, but, you know, that, and then also, um, just, I, I think maybe there needs to be, this is off-topic, kind of, but there needs to be a better way of reporting complaints, in my opinion, um, because I'm known to go to social media if I don't get anywhere with the town. And so, which in some ways is good, in some ways is bad, but I think there needs to be a checks and balances also, or a, a formal complaint, um, line, or to where it can be like, okay, well, this is given to, if your complaint is about the water, this was given over to the public's works director, to know that it really was, and not just an answer from you. That, and then also, when somebody has enough power, in any job, it can become good or bad, um, if they have that much power. But I get what you're saying, you have jobs, you can't spend twenty-four-seven.
And, and, and not to interrupt you, Rachel, but I kinda equate this to how the school operates, in that they hire a superintendent. They don't have a school board member out there in charge of the middle school, one in charge of the elementary, one in charge of the cafeteria, and so on. And I feel like that, um, the school is a big operation, and so is the town. I feel like that, uh, when a superintendent is not performing up to the board's standards, they call that person in as a board, as a group, and address that with them, and, uh.
When they hire a teacher or a principal, it's coming in front of the board, and they approve it.
Correct. But I, I, I will tell you, uh, those positions, the, the board approval is nothing other than a formality. My wife works at the school, and she was hired by a principal, and then it went before the board just for a stamp of approval.
You see, I, I kinda like the teacher versus like a meter reader. I don't think the town board needs to be, uh, hiring a meter reader. You know, that ought to be the public service director's job, or whatever, you know, town administrator. You know, uh, you know, they're gonna set budgets for all the departments, you know, and they ought to be able to work within each other, with each other, to, to accomplish the goals of what we, we set.
Okay, why don't you guys have it set up as a, a spear aspect? You guys have your four points, your police, your fire, your, your, uh, public works, everything else. Those four spears should be hired and dismissed by the board. Now, anything under those aspects, those should be, you know, handled by, you know, the, the respective departments. Now, if it has to go above, let's say, the police chief or the fire department, uh, chief's head, they have the town administrator to go to. And then that gives them a, still a step between you, you, you guys. You, you guys don't have the time to sit there and, and keep going after every little fire. You guys have to put out the big fires, that's the reason you guys are aboard. I understand that there has to be a town administrator. We have to have someone that takes down the, the fires before they get to you guys. Now, that's also where our chief of police comes in, our, our fire chief. Now, if they have a problem with one of the reserves officers, or whatever, Aaron can take care of that. There shouldn't, you know, doesn't need to go to the administrator's off, you know, office. Now, if it, you know, goes past Aaron, okay, we still have someone in between them and the board. But if it comes to an issue that the board needs to look at, the administrator, administrator needs to bring it to the board's attention. It just, you, you can't, the board can't be everywhere, every time.
Right.
So, too many chiefs, not enough leaders.
I got a little bit more to say about my customer service thing. Something we can do with, with complaint, customer complaint information, is we need to gather that information in one place, one location, to where we can actually analyze that data and try to identify negative trends, uh, in the town, in the day-to-day operations. I'm sorry?
Yeah, the board analyzing, the complaint data?
No, not the board.
Sorry.
Uh, uh, I'm talking about a customer service philosophy, uh, like I said earlier, ingrained in all town hall employees. If somebody's got a complaint, they're gonna come here, or call here, or text here, or.
Okay.
Email here, hopefully, and maybe on Facebook, right, Rachel?
Sometimes.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
So, if, if, if we are, if, I don't think we get a lot of negative data, but I think we get enough to possibly, hopefully, see a trend over the period of a year or two. Does that make sense? If we, if we're getting a lot of, a lot of complaints, we, on the same topics, then we need to make, you know, we, our people, either, ninety percent of our complaints would probably be under the public works director. That's what I've got in my mind. Maybe every now and then, somebody might wanna complain about their water bill, or whatever, that'll probably come to town hall.
Oh, it does.
That's where, that's where I would go with.
Am I missing a page here? Everybody just got one page?
Yeah, just one page.
Is it, is it both just right back?
Yeah.
But what's the, uh, what's the minimum qualifications? Special requirements?
It's on the back. It's on the back.
What if it became a formality? What if the town administrator hired?
Not available for the position.
Got the person lined up, the interview was done, this is the candidate I've chosen, and then you all do the voting? What, what are, what make it a formality? You could always reject that, but you would also have a input on the approval. I don't know.
All the employees should have to go through that. I mean, I've talked about your, your chief of police, yes. Your chief of fire, yes. Your, your public works director, yes. Now, a meter reader, or someone that's just servicing those departments? No, there's no reason that the board needs to do a vote on that.
Cliff, I wasn't done yet, is it okay if I talk some more?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, all right, I'm gonna leave that customer service philosophy thing that I've been talking about. I wanna come back up to the, uh, job title again. Uh, and Berta, I wanted to, I just used that business manager as an example. I've got more than one, uh, and, you know, again, I'm just making suggestions. I'm not trying to be in charge of this, or whatever. And I realize that we'll all have to, we'll end up having to vote on this stuff later. And, uh, you know, I'm open to compromise, I'm open to negotiation. Uh, I'm open to you guys telling me that, you know, hey, that stupid stuff, we're not gonna do that. That's what you wanna tell me. But like I said earlier, I think we have an opportunity here, I think we have an opportunity to, if we get the right people in the right place, at the right time, we're gonna be able to hit some home runs around here. And, uh, hopefully, we can completely eliminate customer complaints. Be hard to do, but.
And I agree with you, David, but I, I think that comes down the road when we're actually choosing the people to fill these positions.
Right.
So, with your name change, or the title change, do we end up pushing away some really good candidates because of that title change?
I don't think so, let me tell you why. We've got that organization, what is it, Bert, O M M A? They're the ones that are trying to get some folks in here, and I don't think it would affect what they're doing at all, to be honest with you.
Good.
To me, a lot is gonna be the dollar figure you're gonna put out there on, uh.
Sure, a hundred percent right on that.
If you tell them thirty thousand dollars, they're gonna laugh at you and go back home. Sixty-five thousand, and they start talking.
Is that some official title? I know we're not a city, can't say it's a city manager, since we're not a city.
The town administrator is a, yeah.
Isn't that normally the town administrator, what you tell them?
Yeah. I myself, the, the title doesn't make a whole lot of difference. I mean, I want something to know that they are the person of the town, so, because I feel like you need number one, and then you have other people under your number one. Because you have to have somebody that everybody knows who's number one, and then they delegate to the other people. So, let me, let me just throw this out there real quickly. I was not on the town board at the time this happened, I was a fire chief. But I was in a, in a group of people, and one of the town board members was in that group as well. And somebody came up to him and said, I wanna talk to you about that police chief you got. And they were getting ready to get real native, and they did start to get real native. And this has been many years ago, so it's nobody, and nobody in the past many years trusted me. Um, and he looked at that person, and he said, I have to back them until the day I choose to fire them. And I thought that was very good philosophy, because you stand behind your people until you're, in case your people make mistakes, and do things, and you've tried to work with them, and you can't, then you have to vote to dismiss them and find somebody else. And that's exactly how I feel about this position. I feel like the, the employees need someone to go to. Let's use the police department as another example. An officer has a complaint, they take it to their chief, they don't feel like that complaint was properly addressed or resolved, they've got the town administrator to go to. If they get no, no satisfaction there, they can ask a board member to put it on the agenda. And I just feel like it's, I feel like it's a great chain of command.
Randy?
Yeah, I feel like there needs to be a chain of command, for sure. My fear with the fire, police chief, everybody, public works director, all answering directly to us, is we're gonna have an agenda a mile long every month, to where we can have somebody in between to really take care of these things prior to them coming to us. I feel like coming to the board should be a last result, or a last, that's the last option. I feel like we need somebody in there that can put those fires out for us. And that's one of the things that I'm, have in my mind, as far as a town administrator is the CEO, we're the board of directors, for lack of, you know, better term. So, that's my thought process on it. That's always, I mean, I.
I'm gonna throw in one more thing and then I'll be quiet, I promise. On this agenda, I'm gonna be done, I'm gonna be done handling. I don't feel like it's fair for us to hire a public works director or someone who does not report, police chief, whatever, fire chief, that does not report to the town administrator, because we are holding that town administrator accountable for the money. We are holding them accountable to develop and adhere to a budget, and if we allow somebody who does not have to report to them, they can go out and buy and spend whatever they want, and it's not gonna be them that the board's gonna look to, it's gonna be the administrator and say, "Why is this department thirty percent over budget at the end of the year?" So, I feel like if we're gonna hold them accountable for that, then they need to have, they need to have some authority in what is being spent.
Harold, would you like to say something else?
Can I motion it, put it up for a minute?
I make a motion to accept the town administrator drop description by O M M S. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold? David?
No.
D is discussion of possible action to approve the quote from Daniel's Construction for flooring the cemetery restroom.
Question I gotta ask on this, is that person that donated that part, is any of their money still left over to do that, or is this totally?
No, because Harold, what they did, they never gave the town the money. They hired the contractor, the builder, to build it. They remained anonymous, and the town only dealt with the contractor, who would come to us with changes and that sort of thing. So, no money was donated to the town, just that building was donated once it's.
That's one of my biggest drives, that the V has not been finished. If I have ten years, however long it's been done. I want to make a motion to approve Daniel's quote.
I'll second that.
Hey, now, can we discuss?
Yes.
These, and if you notice, on the agenda, we've got another quote. None of these included plumbing. So, I don't, I hate to approve putting a floor down, and let's go get a floor, and we don't have pipes under it for a restroom facility.
So, table?
Well, I think we could approve the flooring quote and just put a, add to your motion.
Subject of plumbing? The contract would not have nothing to do with plumbing, so.
No, except we want the plumbing first.
Contingency.
Yeah, contingent upon.
Air is the realtor.
And we're gonna probably need a quote on that, because it's not easy. To know what we're spending.
And I don't have one for the dogs.
It's a kind of computer program. And it very plainly states in there plumbing not included. Same with masonry, electric plumbing, heating and cooling.
Me, why don't we just table this, and then get somebody that would do all of it? Give us a book for the whole thing.
Like a general contractor?
Yeah. I mean, the dog's ought to be able to, dog's ought to be able to give you a bid for plumbing, you know, because he's gonna call down on you.
Call somebody, yeah.
So, I think we ought to table, table D and D.
Okay.
So, we will table that. So, we're also gonna table the quote from Doc Currit. Okay. Everybody good with that? So, then we are to F, discussion of possible action to appoint Ronnie Decker as authorized agent to O K M R F.
So, O K M R F is the retirement program that we have, and when Tiffany resigned, she was the only person that was, like, they were able to contact for anything like that. So, right now, we have no contact with the retirement program until, until someone's appointed that contact to be able to, to talk to them about the retirement program, that the withdrawals, anything like that.
Okay. Question. Has Ronnie had any training on that, or will he be getting trained on it, or?
She won't. And the reason, the reason that they suggested Ronnie, she's the one who's going to be paying that bill every two weeks with the payroll invoices, so they thought that she would be the, the official person, since she was already gonna be paying those bills, and no.
Do we need more than one? Or can we even have more than one?
We can have an authorized user along with the authorized agent, that's on a different form, but I think, right now.
I would assume you would have to have the authorized agent first to give the authority to add an authorized user.
I think we oughta, I think we oughta have two people, so if she's sick and.
Absolutely.
Is off or on vacation, then we need somebody to communicate into that software or whatever.
Yeah. I should say, I mean, this is off topic, but O K M R F is just one of the issues where Tiffany was the sole person on a lot of the contacts. So, like, the cell phones for the police department, we can't get any bill information on that, because it was solely in Ed's name.
He was down.
As the contact.
He was listed as the sole contact twice.
Yeah.
It was Ed and Ed.
So, I mean, honestly, in the future, if we have to have the board's authority for any of it, like, we're gonna have to just keep bringing them as, as they find, find the issues that need to be taken care of.
But they will take something from the board to take him off and change that, correct?
Erin got that, got AT&amp;T taken care of. So, yes, we do, and we have three names on AT&amp;T now.
Okay, good.
But it took enough to Congress.
I can imagine.
To do that.
As far as this goes, this is the plan of action that O M, O K M R F suggested that we do. We appointed an authorized agent, and then we go ahead and have the authorized agent work with the town and them to authorize a user, a second user.
Make a motion to appoint Ronnie Decker as authorized agent for O K M R F with the following, and maybe thereon, put a second person on.
I'll second that.
Add a second one now?
No. Later, nature, that's about Shelley's second.
I would probably go ahead in, just my opinion, maybe add David for now until we get a full-time. And I'm just saying, because.
David thinks Shelley ought to be on there.
Yeah, I know, but it's Shelley.
But I'm just saying, I would add a second person, just in case. Because we, like I said, we spent over an hour the other night not trying to get any information other than how much do we need to cut the check for? Over an hour, we still, we got nowhere, not on this one, but another company. We got nowhere, it literally took into the next day for us to get somebody to even talk to us, because nobody was on the count. So, I'm just gonna suggest, just in case Ronnie's gone, Ronnie's sick.
That would be fine. We really don't have to worry about it right now, because I don't think we'd have to go to the board, unless you guys think we do. They want somebody on here as an authorized agent. The authorized agent can appoint, we didn't have one, I suggested you, and they said, "He's not on the list, we can't take his suggestions." So, if the board nominates this person, Ronnie, then Ronnie can suggest, and if we're gonna bring it to the board, that's fine. But, yeah, they said we'd have to do this first.
Turn him in second.
I second. Oh, Bert did, did I?
No, you did, and Cliff.
You did.
I did. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff? Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you, Ronnie. Uh, G. I'm sorry? Because she's gonna be the, the dealer, so I say thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Can I say thank you?
Yeah, I thought you were trying to talk to somebody.
Oh, I said thank you. G, discussion of possible action to get a Porter John's for the car show. I almost said, "Oh, yeah."
I think we just send all the men to Sarah's and all the women to Tony's and.
Please, no man. Go outside, go outside.
I make a motion to approve a Porter John for the car show.
Second. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hey, discussion of the possible action to appoint a floodplain administrator. You're up again, Bert.
Sorry. I'm sorry. We have one small area in town that's in the floodplain, and it is out, I believe northeast of Forties. But because of that, we have to have a floodplain administrator, and Tiffany was filling that role for us, and it is, it is just something, some grants require that we have to have a report from the floodplain administrator to say that that grant is not in property involved in flooding, as established by the federal government. That doesn't mean somewhere else can't flood.
We appoint Dave.
Huh?
Can we appoint Dave?
We can appoint whomever. I, uh. This Dave? Which Dave are you talking about?
This one.
I was looking at that one.
I was looking at this one.
We can have whomever.
They're ganging up on us, David.
I know.
I thought there was a floodplain south of Bullfoot, do you know?
I don't think so. Like I said, it's, it's the one that's actually recognized by the feds. That doesn't necessarily mean that.
Sure.
You know, that that isn't an area that floods, but they just haven't designated it.
Cliff, I have a comment on this. In my opinion, in the future, if we do decide to hire a public works director, that would be the person, in my opinion, that would need to be the floodplain administrator.
I agree also with you there.
I agree with you.
I just want to throw that out there, to make it, you know, part of our minutes. That's all I have on.
I'm up for who it would like to do. David, are you up to it?
I have no idea what it would involve.
Well, then, you're the man for the job.
That's what happened the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
We want a yes before you figure it out.
Well, you said they just report to the, report to somebody once in a while?
Yeah, there's not a lot. Some, sometimes they have to sign off on grant paperwork to say that this is outside the floodplain.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I would, I would if you, but I don't have any other scapegoat.
Don't you sit back there.
I make a motion to have David be the floodplain administrator.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I, discussion of possible action to have a computer information concept C I C come in and house and train all town employees. Bert, this is your.
Well, let me tell you, you're fixing to find out how this works, but as mayor, your initials are get on many, many agenda items that you have never heard of before.
Well.
Just because you're the mayor, so.
Well, I figured you had some contact with this computer information.
Well, all, C I C is the computer software company we use for everything, from accounting to who's in what cemetery space, so utility billing, they, they basically are our software provider. I'm gonna let one of you all answer or explain what, what this proposal entails, because.
So, as, well, as everybody should know, when Tiffany left, Tiffany was doing the job of white people, hands down. She was doing everything from accounts payable, she was doing payroll, she was doing her job, plus everything else in there. At one point, it was just Tiffany and I, and I have recently just been introduced, like, six months ago, to utility billing, so she's even stepped in and had been doing that, too. So, with her being gone, Denise has been here since December 1st, and Ronnie's been here maybe a month. We have had, they have had very, very little training, and I'm still new. I can't answer hardly any questions in accounts payable when the new ladies need help. So, we are, we are struggling, I'm not even gonna sugarcoat it, we are struggling. C I C is such a strong, and there's so much information in there, that we are bobbing our heads down out of water daily. Some days, we're underwater more than above. And in the past two months, or month and a half since Tiffany's left, I promise you, I have called and messaged C I C more since then than in the past nine years I have been here. There is so much information, and David put it the best the other day, we don't know what we don't know. The other day was thrown to me, we need to have this report, this quarterly report. I didn't even know what this quarterly report was, they threw this out there, and I've never heard of it. I don't know how I'm supposed to go and do that report, when I didn't even know there's a report to do. So, we in the office have to have some kind of training to help us.
Question. You've been here, you've been here in the office nine years. When was this information concepts database brought in here and put in place?
Before me.
Before you, so, and you've worked here that long and you've never been exposed to this database?
Yeah, but I wasn't hired for UV and I wasn't hired for AP, I was trained in the court, the cemetery, the code, in that area.
Yeah.
So when I started, sorry.
You're talking about, right then.
When I started, we had four people in the office.
Right then, you were just describing your, not your treasurer job, you were describing your office job.
Correct.
I got you.
And there was four of us, and it was spread out.
Uh-huh.
Then it got down to two of us at one point, which was Tiffany and I, and Tiffany did the job of everybody just about and was training me in the UV. And I, when I say training in UV, when it comes time to do handhelds and to do billing, that's an all-day process for me, because I, I'm not, I don't know it like the back of my hand. So it is, there's just so much to it.
What about, what about this company? This company is the company that provided us the software that we're talking about? So don't they have tech support on the phone, can't you call them and talk to them?
We do, a hundred times a day. Let's just put it this way, I got it memorized when, I don't even have to ask them for their login. I log on, I put it in, I just put in her, one of the codes that they give me, and we do it multiple times a day. But if they will come here and they will train, I don't know about you guys, there's training online and there's hands-on training. Hands-on training is so much better because they are here and you can say, you can sit there and you can watch this mouse click, 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 click. Did you get it?
Nope.
Or they can say, okay, here's this, and let's walk through this together, and you can learn.
Okay, I'm looking at the, at the exhibit.
Mm-hmm.
It says, uh, budgetary, fund accounting, accounts payable, payroll, utility billing, and accounts receivable. Those are the, those are the topics that you guys are looking for training on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm seeing forty hours, which is one week, for seven thousand dollars. You got, do you, Shelley, do you think that you and whoever else needs this training can get everything that you need in forty hours?
Think we're gonna get a lot more in forty hours than if we're a phone call.
Okay.
Cause they're gonna be here and walk us through it and train us. But you have to, I mean, to me, you gotta look at the whole picture. We can bobble through this and we can do day-to-day and get through it, but what's gonna happen in three months or six months when we get audited and they say, well, where's this report? Well, nobody told us to do that report because we didn't know about it. Where is these, this paperwork at?
I've got a question for you, Shelley. Will CIC train you on what reports need to be done, or are they just mainly going to train you on using their software?
I think they will.
I think maybe, where I'm going with this, I think maybe you need. I think maybe we need our accounting firm to come in.
And I said.
And make a list.
Yes.
And I know Tammy's already been here, what, three times?
Well, I sat with her yesterday forever and a day.
How long, how late were you here last night?
Oh, I went at seven thirty.
You worked with her till seven thirty last night?
And we, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting off topic.
No, it is two different things, I get that. And yes, we do, we need a list from our accounting of what reports and what needs to be done with training there, but also in CIC, if you have a, if you have a problem with your water and you come into one of the new girls and you ask them to log on and how much, why do, why is my water this way or this way or this way? Well, they don't know how to go actually into and read it all, they need, I mean, we have to be taught how to read the different reports and the different things, I mean.
Question, uh, if you hire a town administrator, would, would he be, would he be with this program or would he have one design?
I would hope they would learn this program as much money as the town puts into it.
But.
I don't.
If you hired, if you hired your own, or if you had a town administrator and he has his own certain ideas, then we're all back.
This is the software that our accounting firm works with, this is pretty much the number one software company in municipal county. I, I would like to not hire an administrator that wasn't familiar with the CICs.
It would be a bonus if they were.
If they were.
But I really think if it's somebody with an accounting background, somebody with that type of background, I really think they will kick it up quick.
In my opinion, and, well, it's, it's a fact, um, this is just one of the costs the town's gonna have to bear for losing Tiffany. Our accounting person that we've had to have up here, I believe is charging a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. We've had to have the attorney up here. Nobody realized what we were saving by having Tiffany that had the abilities to do this. And, um, losing her involves some pretty significant cost, significant cost, and this is just one of those. And I think, I think we need to get our people all the training we could possibly get.
Also, Harold, on your question, once they get trained and, and are a lot more proficient and comfortable with this stuff after some time, by the time we get an administrator in here who has some experience with this type of atmosphere, it would be easier for them to train him or her, uh, in the ins and outs of the CIC software, once they're comfortable with it. Right now, we don't have anybody that's comfortable with it.
And we've had the software for over nine years.
Yeah, you should look at the software, it's, it's a monster. It's great software for the, for the purpose, but it is extremely complicated.
I would like to see it.
Will they be leaving any training references, something you guys can refer back to?
Yes, and we still can call them and get support all day long. I mean, if, we still have their support and everything.
Would pay any support.
Um.
Another, another question I have, on that, on them supporting you, do they, do they have the capability of logging in and taking over your computer and showing you exactly how to do it?
They do.
Okay.
And, I mean, Denise is one of the new ones, you can ask Denise, do you think the training, if they come here and train you is gonna be better than the training over the computer?
Yes.
I was just, the reason I was asking earlier about the forty hours, I was just wondering if that was enough.
Can we get more, and we learn billing and court and this and this, but we're still not as proficient in these other areas, can we get them back to phone in on that?
I think we can, and I also think that it's gonna help so much more because when they come in and they train us, and for instance, if they come in and, like, I'm doing utility billing, I know it enough to get through it, but I don't know it well enough, like, I, I can't just sit down and do billing. I still have, I call Katie, I'll call Tiffany, I'll message them, I'll send them a screenshot, hey, I am here in the system, but I need to get to my next step, but where do I go with the system? Because I'm still lacking, it's kinda like, I'm, I'm just lacking like a piece, so I need them to come in and help me. And, but if I'm lacking that piece, if I'm doing my report and I get stuck, I can instant message them, and they usually call me, uh, within ten minutes, cause I put man down, I don't, if I'm stuck, I'm stuck. And, but there's, you can, but if it's an emergency, you can put like, um, call down, call, whatever the word is, I say man down, that's usually stuck. But you can tell them it's not important, you can repeat, report back in two hours, four hours, or eight hours. But CIC is very, very good about reporting back to us and getting back, back to us. And.
Well, I, I think, I think forty hours is, is okay to get them started. And I also think that, I was noticing that this company is in Greeley, Colorado. It might be cheaper in the future after this to send, you know, send our people up there one at a time to get.
I'll take the first week.
They'll just play around in Greeley, Colorado, this is very free there.
Well, what I'm trying to say here is, it might be cheaper for us to send our people up there to the company for a week.
So when I first started, David.
Do they have training facilities on their side?
I'm not sure up there, but when I first started, we had a CIC symposium, and we would go for two or three days, like OML, but we would go for two or three days and we would sit through classes and they would show us all the new stuff that came in. And then we still have one day where if we find issues, like if there's something in one of the areas and we're like, oh, we can, this needs change, there's one day we'll sit in here and we will go over it with CIC and every other town that logs in that day. And the money's budgeted in there, cause that's what we paid for, and then they'll go and make changes.
Enhancements.
Enhancements, yeah. I knew there was a word missing. So we do have one day of training for that, um, we used to go onsite and do it, but now we just log on and do it, um.
If we've had this software for more than nine years.
Hennessy was one of their first towns ever.
If, if we've had the software for more than nine years, it's probably been updated twenty to thirty times with changes.
I just got updated, updated again the other day, I was trying to run a report and.
Do they, do they show it as version?
Yes.
Forty point three?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they make enhancements all the time, maybe there's.
I'm extremely interested in taking a look at that database, but I will get with David and try to pick a time that it won't kill you guys for me to come in, give me a little bit of a show and tell, if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, let you watch them actually using it.
I'll, I'll make it as.
You can watch us call for support.
I would actually like to do that.
When you go to all employees, I mean, Dave, Shelley, Denise.
Ronnie.
Ronnie, Brian.
No, the.
No, no.
Just the office people.
I think it's smarter for them to learn firsthand rather than some, someone expecting.
Huh? To an extent.
And then they come back and teach them, I think you should send each employee, like, or have them come here and teach an employee for a week and then teach them.
Well. I think that would, uh, be a good idea also, but it is very hard in a place of business that is this busy, has this many things going on, to not, you know, get training. Your idea of going there really oppressed me because you would be there and wouldn't have all these other distractions.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm not saying that it can't happen in here, but it needs to happen somewhere other than out front where the public's driving up to the window, coming in, the phones are ringing.
That was.
Off of the wall, trying to learn something, it's, or for me, it's very impossible.
I was gonna ask, when they come and train, if they come and train, can we close it down for a couple hours through certain parts of the training? Like, did, when they're.
I would schedule them, Shelley, to come when.
Dead week?
In a dead week where you don't have people paying you telebills, not the first of the month, or board meeting week. And what I'm wondering is if we could get some temporary people to come out.
Why are you looking at me?
Took out some experience, but if we could get somebody to come in and wait on the counter and the window.
Answer phones.
And answer phones, just to do that kinda stuff, cause.
We have five board members.
Well, I wanna tell you, and hey, if it was a day I could do it, I'd come out and answer phones, I'm not gonna take money, but I would answer phones. But I have been in here many times in the last month, month and a half, two months, and it is kaboom, boom, 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 and I, I even feel sorry for you, Shelley.
Was that making you now?
But anyway, no, on a serious note. I know it's very overwhelming, and I would just like for that training, seven thousand dollars for a week is a lot of money.
It is.
But I think it's well worth it, but I think that you need their undivided attention and vice versa.
We can go there and train, but also if they come, well, I don't know if we can go there, but if they come here and train, if there's a situation at the time, say Denise is doing something and there's a situation at the time, they're here to walk her through that and help her at the moment. And that's pretty, that's big.
That's big.
I mean, that's better than our support call, which they're really good about doing.
Well, I think a forty hour week with all you guys here is a good way to get started. And I'm like Bert, I think training and training and more training is good for everybody. And I would recommend that you guys get with them and find out if there's a, a better cost available if we send a person, one person up there to Greeley and attend training, come back to work, and then two or three weeks later, maybe send another person.
Yeah. And I don't know if they do that, but we can ask for sure.
Yeah, if I was you guys, I would find out.
I talk to Tiffany more now on the phone than I did when I worked with her for ours.
I, I'll guarantee you, they'll, they'll probably take one person at a time, it'd be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, I think so too, David. The, the fire service software we use, they have semi-annual or quarterly maybe, but I think semi-annually or annual training that we can go to, and it's usually, it's quite expensive, and it's usually in places like Vegas and Honolulu and places that I've never, obviously never been, but, but, but I'm wondering, does CIC have anything? Do they have training symposiums?
They did, and then I think it stopped right around.
Cause like, yeah, right on COVID, they, they stopped.
They stopped.
They stopped having them.
They haven't restarted.
And then they just went to like a virtual enhancement, like you just log on and watch the enhancements and ask questions.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think David's got a good idea, and I, I would suggest forty hours to get them in here so they can help you with your Hennessy issues that so-and-so's water bill is not pulling up or whatever you may be.
When they come here, it's all training about just Hennessy. You know, if we go there, it's just gonna be.
Brawn.
Yeah. So we want.
In all honesty, I think if we can get you guys up there, maybe one employee each, each year or something, I mean, send all of you one time a year, whatever, at different times. I think we need to look into that.
I agree.
I make a motion that we contract with CIC for in-house training for seven thousand dollars plus expenses. And I wanna make sure you guys did see on there that hotel and travel and all is in addition to that seven thousand, so.
And I will second that.
Roll call please.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
So possible actions to vote for Oklahoma, Minnesota, search group, Nomad trustees. You'll find that in your packet.
I know I saw.
Somebody who know these guys.
There's a, a second page, or maybe on the back.
Yeah, the ballot, the ballot's on one side, go ahead, David.
That has a description of who's, uh, up for, up for draft there, plus two letters that we got from a couple of them that are really major.
This is always an issue, cause we never know. Anything about it. I'll just tell Randy, this is always an issue, cause we.
Don't know nothing about it.
We don't really know. Tiffany, and maybe you guys do too, from going to the OML conferences, had, at different times known some of them.
So there's Tim Lyons, city manager, city of Midwest City, incumbent. There's Pam Polk, city manager, city of Collinsville, incumbent. Justin Battle is assistant city manager of city of Mustang. Brian Lindley, city manager of Chautauqua. Russ Megham, chief financial officer of city of Perry. Elizabeth Slough, city court clerk, city of Hill.
Can we pick three?
Will we pick three? That kinda looks like.
Chris, I got a dumb question.
Yes, sir.
Are we all picking three?
No, sir.
Are we picking three as a board?
As a board, we pick three.
That's what I thought.
I kinda like the looks of the guy from Perry because it's a community closer to our size.
Right. Me too. They could be classed in there.
Which I suppose Hilton is too, how big's Hilton?
I have no idea. Probably.
I think it's probably.
Guy in Mustangville is also a good one.
Okay, you say Justin Battles? Correct? Everybody agree on that one?
Yes.
And Brian Lindley.
And I heard, uh, Russ.
Me too.
Me too. And we have a third?
Pam Polk was, she was, she had a good class over there. Uh, from Collinsville, she had a good class over there at the O M A too.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good with our Pam Polk. And then we have Justin Battles and we have Russell Bishop.
Any new amendments a matter of not known or which we could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of hosting agenda in accordance with section three one one dash nine, Title twenty-five O S.
Citizen comments? Councilperson.
I'm looking past you, right? I was looking at Kim also, I thought Kim might wanna say something.
No.
I didn't want front row.
Second. Vote, uh, roll call please.
And Cliff.
Cliff. Okay. Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
H S U T L is Authority Board Trustees, regular meeting, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Town Hall Councilman. Call to order, roll call please.
Randy?
Yes.
Or here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda, amendments of the meeting, approval of claims as follows. March purchase orders, one hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and four cents. April purchase orders, fifty thousand, four sixty-eight, fourteen. April meter deposit refunds is zero. Treasurer's report.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Citizen comments? Bart?
No. Not this one, thank you, with this one. But Jack may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I've got a question for Ms. Burge, if you don't mind. Uh, actually, I'm, I'm back on the database again. We always have a treasurer's report on the agendas, both of them, once a month. And I'm beginning to wonder if there's some kind of report that you can print out of that C I C database that may be fairly easy for you to do, to give us some financial data that we can look at. But we, we talk, we go over this every month, we say treasurer's report and I'm not complaining, Shelley, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Is there something that we need to be getting from you when we call out treasurer's report at the meeting?
What do you want and I can? What kind of report do you want?
Well, I said some. In the past, the treasurer's report recup, covered budget amendments and moving money in CDs. The board used to have to vote if they had, if we had money in a CD and we need to move some to pool cash, the board had to vote on that every time. Um, the accountant at one point recommended putting that in the consent agenda so it could be automatic. I think what you're maybe what you're after, Dave, is what Crawford's prepared for his quarterly or quarterly report with the entire financial picture in my log, I mean, are you wanting something else?
Yeah, let me, let me work that with, uh, if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and pull that question back and let me work on that with David and Shelley.
Yeah.
A little bit, but I will not task them with anything until I come back.
I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Overstep.
No, it's okay.
What you're asking, but I, I just wanted to give you a little background on why that is listed on there that way.
I just didn't want you guys to think that I was gonna try to slam a bunch of work on there. But I, I, I do have some ideas in my head on some of the cash flows that I would like to see on a monthly basis and you guys may like to see them also.
Okay.
So we'll talk about that some more and I, I'll get on David's calendar and Shelley's calendar to discuss it with them. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, other scheduled business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discussion with possible actions to approve to pay, application request to number seven, final payment from Worth Hydrochem for the Hennessy Water Treatment Plant R O replacement project.
Yes, sir. Is that correct? The amount owed to them is.
Wow. Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifteen cents. That includes all the change orders and everything that is a total.
And this is our final payment, correct? This is our final credit payment on this.
Is this for the first kid or?
For, for the only one we, yeah, we replaced. They refur, refurbished the other one and it looked really good. Uh, they didn't, so we had another company do it.
I make a motion to approve the pay application request, number seven, final payment from Worth Hydrochem for the Hennessy Water Treatment Plant R O S replacement project of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
I second that. Roll call please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Possible action to review and consider the job description for Public Works Director as presented by O M M S. We. Do we save all the other ones? No, we did. We did.
Okay. I know we talked a lot about that in the first one, about the public works direction. There is a front and back on there. Also, there are duties and there are qualifications. This is a suggestion from O M M S. And they only have to have a high school diploma or G E D equivalent. David, did you wanna talk some about the Public Works Director, sir?
No, sir, not really. I kinda covered everything that I had to say earlier.
Oh, I just wanted.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you giving me another opportunity to talk on that, but I have nothing else to say.
Harold?
I'm, I'm done, Cliff, go ahead.
Bert?
Randy?
Have a motion? Looks like Carol's right. No, he, that's already, is he still from the other position?
Oh.
Can I make a motion to approve the job description for Public Works Director presented by O M M S? I will second that. Roll call please.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion with possible action to approve the change order number two from Worth Hydrochem to Hennessy Water Treatment Plant R O replacement project. I thought we did that.
It was, it was included in the other one, the price was, the price was. But it's, uh, that's actually, change order is a different.
Oh, the change order?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, uh.
It, I said, it should be listed on the other one. The change order. Yeah, so I said, it's a, it's a separate entity, but it, it was still included in the.
The payments included, yeah, but we still took some of the dues.
The change order was nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
I mean, one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Which was included in the twenty-one thousand, but it was a change to the plan, so you have to approve the change.
I make a motion to approve change order number two from Worth Hydrochem for Hennessy Water Treatment Plant R O replacement project.
Of one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
One thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars.
Nine eighty.
Or nine eighty.
I'll second that. Roll call please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I need discussion with the possibility of action to accept the sanitary sewer system capital improvements investigation and plan to presented by Cowan Group.
So it's not in your packet because it was massive.
Oh.
No, it's this.
Can you pass it around when you read it?
Sure, yeah, real quick.
You guys brought sleeping bags, right?
Is it both of those?
Uh, no, they're, they're both the same.
Oh.
They sent three actually, we sent one with Brian had one and then we had the other two up at Town Hall, uh, which they'll still be here for perusal. Uh, what they, what they want to do, and, and we don't have to do it all at once. This is a, uh, can be a, uh, you know, staged progress, mat work and, and what he's, what he's thinking is that the report is done in a manner that it can be considered capital improvement, which gives extra points when applying for funding, so it needs to go before the council to be approved and then signed by the mayor so that we can go forward and and it, it says it's got twenty pages, what it, what it consists of.
This is basically the report from the federal grant we got last year, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar federal grant.
Right.
For the sewer study, they basically went in, checked all the manholes, looked at sewer lines, what they did, and then they made your recommendations.
For repair.
For repair.
Is there an executive summary in the front of that, David?
Yes.
That's it right there?
And it has, of course, about there, the last one or two pages has a, I think, an overall cost estimate.
I think it was.
I made a motion to accept the sanitary sewer system capital improvement investigation and, and plan that presented by Cowan and.
I will second that. Roll call please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Item E, discussion with a possibility of action to adopt an ordinance for sewer line backflow presentatives. Preventers.
I was gonna have a gentleman from O M A here, we had an emergency come up and he did not make it tonight. But I do have a backhoe out here.
Do we have? Do we have an ordinance for this in our packet?
Uh, yeah, suggestions for, to the, the other towns have adopted and then we could have the attorney draft one for us.
So it'll be the attorney to draft one? And where does this go?
This is through line?
Right.
Be from the service line from the house.
From the house, okay.
Yes.
So once it gets there, it can't go back to the house?
It can come back in.
Right.
It's a checkbook.
It's a checkbook. And basically unscrew it. There you go, that comes out, it's open.
And we currently do not have any or?
No, we, no.
This will be at homeowner's expense, Rachel.
So my suggestion was new builds require these and/or if somebody has to replace their existing.
Or repairing.
Or repairing, they need to put this in.
And, and in the packet, there are Brian, not, um, Chalktall's ordinance that they have in place.
Oklahoma City, Ed, Ben?
Yeah, so there's some ordinances that are in place in other towns in your guys' packet. If you wanna look those over to, to kinda get an idea.
If I need one of them, where do I go to buy it?
I actually got Oklahoma contractors brought this to, but you can get them at Lowe's or, yeah, lock supply. Lock supply, we'll have them.
So will it be mandatory with the repair or is it optional and highly recommended?
It's, I would suggest it be mandatory because not only is it protecting the homeowner, it's also kinda saving the town too, a little bit.
A lot, because we've had instances where people with basement have had backflow and get two, three feet of not creating water in their basement.
Right.
One sec, what do those cost, Brian?
Would you have to get it? No, no.
I mean, they don't look like anything that would be.
No, it's where it looks like it'd be.
Preventors.
Okay, just the flow opens it then?
Yes.
Where are you gonna recommend to put that?
That's gonna be up to whoever puts in the service line.
That's like right outside the house, probably, don't you think?
Yeah.
So how much is it gonna cost to have that installed?
It's up to the homeowner?
To the homeowner, I mean.
Since the average is about three to four hundred to have it installed. I don't know where that is.
Well, yeah, if you was to call somebody and say, hey, put one of these in.
But on new construction, all you'd be looking at is the cost of the actual part, which would probably be about a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Well, if I had to do it, it's gonna cost me that.
Well, if you have somebody dig it up and replace it, yeah, you're talking to labor and.
But like if you're snaking your line or something and they have to dig your line out, you know, you're just gonna look at that cost of that. And you're not gonna put that in till they.
Right, I'm not gonna pretend till I have a problem, right?
Right, right.
I'm sorry, but.
And it's, it's, there's several towns going to this.
Yeah.
So we gotta have the lawyer write up an ordinance?
But if it's optional, I guess for new builds, the ordinance, okay.
They agree.
Did you say optional?
Well, for. Right now.
Oh, yeah.
Right now it is until there's ordinance in place.
But we plan on making it not optional for a repair and for sure new builds. Okay, so in that case, you wouldn't have the option to say no.
Plus you gotta replace your sewer line from your house to our man. If you have your plumber come in and unclog your toilet, that doesn't mean you gotta put one of those in.
Right.
Those, those have, those have gone to a hundred and fifty bucks.
I make a motion to have the attorney draft an ordinance requiring backflow preventers.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Number five, new builds as any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to time of hosting agenda in accordance with section three one one dash nine, Title twenty-five O P S. Citizen comments?
I have some.
Yes.
Um, I am curious on the drainage that's being done on Mitchell Road. Number one, was that through a grant?
Yes.
Number two, what all area of Hennessy is that grant covering? And if you don't know the answer now, you can.
Well, from Oklahoma to Seventh Street.
Yeah. And.
And the school just approved it.
Okay, so it's from Oklahoma.
Oklahoma to Fifth.
All right. So did the school have to apply for that grant, or did the city?
The town did that.
The town did that. Okay.
Now, the school is also working on a drainage problem with ourselves.
Sure.
And that is, it's separate than our...
State-related, and they don't have a grant. Okay. Um, so my question is, and I can, I can email this too, so I've always been about drainage, not for myself, but particularly, particularly where I live, actually, so we have the drainage in our streets that is completely blocked. And we've tried as neighbors to stick things down in there to get it going, and that's no big deal, but if you go down and look where Kyle Choate used to live, right off of Fifty-One and Mitchell, their, their drainage has completely collapsed, not necessarily through, but the entrance of the metal pin horn, yeah, is completely down. Um, does water pool there all the time? No, but I would like for us to maybe look there and other places in town. I know drainage has been an issue for a long time. I understand that, and I'm not asking this to be done immediately or special things to be done where I live, but I do know that Mitchell Road, and maybe we need to approach the school, I mean, we get a lot of, that's definitely something people are going to be seeing if we're talking aesthetically pleasing, too, coming through there, it's very ugly. Um, and so I think that if they're going to be fixing down there, that could very well help with drainage, but it's going to start where, right there at Fifty-One, you know, if we're wanting it to go through. So I would just, maybe we could look into that, and I don't know if there are any grants. I'm not asking to spend a lot of money on it, but it's definitely an issue over there. We're definitely lower, like our water table at our house is very high, so...
Rachel, there's a...
Well, you looked for it.
The REIT grants and things are annual, and the CVG grants are usually available annually unless we have a previous grant open.
Sure.
When it comes up. And some bigger projects we do still have open, when another one's available, but anyway. I think with what we're doing on the south end of Oklahoma, what the school's getting ready to do on the north end, you bring up a very valid point of what's lying further north in the school. And perhaps we could look into a grant to open that, open that up or put in new culverts or whatever, which would give us pretty much, I think, good drainage for that entire mile
I do.
From Fifty-One Highway to Seventh Street, so. I think that's something that would be wise to look into.
And that is actually the second, uh, second phase of, of a grant. You know, we did right there by Marino's House, down by the school, back that way to drain off that way, and then that part of it was, you know, to Oklahoma.
Yeah, and I've yet to drive around necessarily during a heavy rain to figure out other parts of the town in need, but I do know that, I mean, I think Jack had it on camera, they were canoeing. I mean, it's definitely building up.
I wish we'd get a heavy rain for you to drive around and look at it.
Yes, I wish we did.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I know there's a lot of other, and I know, the way I've been, it's been explained to me is, which I did not know this until probably last year, there's only so many grants we can have out or accepted at a time. So I think, is that kind of what I'm understanding? Okay, so just something to maybe put out there on that.
It was explained to me that the, the reason that there was a grant for the Fifth Street to Oklahoma is it falls into a low income or some kind of a thing that met the grant need prior, the ground from the school had been qualified for me in that, so it's up to the school to do what they can do. But that part you were talking about, the north end, might fit into one of those situations.
Possibly, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's true of CDVG grants, this, this based on...
Income.
Okay.
Great. And then I don't know if this is the time and place, so shut me down. I had emailed Bert and Randy prior to him getting on the board, but one issue that we are having, and once again, I live there, so I lived this, with the school making it a one-way during certain times of the day, the traffic through there is absolutely insane, which, you know, that's okay. But we are getting, and I've talked to the police, and they've sat there a few times, but I have, I mean, they're doing a great job, but they can't spend all their time there, and I'm not asking them to, but they fly through there. Um, and it's just a matter of time. I mean, I've taught my kids, my nieces and my son, you don't get in the road, however, and there's elderly people walking through there, and I've yelled to, till I can't yell anymore, and I don't want to be a hateful neighbor or, you know, a person, I'm sure that's how I come off, but it's actually insane, and I don't know if that's a school problem or a town problem. And I had pitched the idea of putting speed bumps, which sounds extreme, but Randy had came by and he was talking to me as a friend and said, oh, I think we need stop signs, and I didn't disagree with him, but it would be, where would you put them, and then once you stop, they're going to take off. So I don't know how to resolve that. I just don't want something to happen. Um, and I don't know if there's a good, you know, way to do that other than just keep your kids out of the road, but I mean, there was like ten kids playing basketball over there, and, um, I don't know. I don't know what to do about it.
I do the same thing. I holler at people, slow down, I'm on a dead-end street, too.
Yeah, and I, and I hate to be that person, but it's just...
No, I ain't that person.
My husband's...
Perhaps we could have David ask Aaron to have an officer sit there randomly, is it mostly after school?
Oh, it's awful in the mornings.
Morning is...
It's work. It's terrible.
But to sit down manning at three or four houses where they're not really seeing...
I think manning is better than Red Fork.
Red Fork is...
Because by the time they come around off of Mitchell going west, they see the cop there, which they sat there in the, before, and they, they're just going slow by that time because they hit that drainage.
Maybe if they weren't sitting in plain sight.
Right, I agree with that. And so, and I don't think a flashing light would slow them down. I mean, I'm guilty for flying down Oklahoma. However, that is wider, and there's no excuse for that, but I, if you had flashing signs, I would probably...
And don't?
Probably. But it does seem like I'm asking because I live there, once again, but it's just me being scared to death because it is residential and, and they just, and even during lunch, I don't know why, but the kids choose to come down there, or Oklahoma, and they fly down there. And I've always been an advocate for putting stop signs on Oklahoma, more stop signs, but I don't, I don't know why or why we haven't, or if it's just always been that way, but I'm afraid something's going to happen.
I lived at my house over there, and then cars would come down that road at midnight at one o'clock in the morning, and they'd hit that B, and you'd hear them scrape the bottom of the car.
For sure, and they just, I don't know what it is about that road, it's just there's, they just fly.
They can't hit that bridge.
There's something, yeah.
Curved and...
Something about it, but I don't know. And there may not be anything we can do, it may just be a parenting thing, but...
One thing I think maybe we as a, ought to think about doing is before school starts next fall, possibly getting with the superintendent, we've got horrible traffic problems on Oklahoma Avenue and Mitchell during school pickup hours in Walnut.
Yeah, I was going to mention Walnut.
There's, there'll be cars backed up at that intersection there, Walnut and Oklahoma, three or four cars. I come up there the other day and was wanting to go straight, and there I see them waiting to turn north to get their kid. Maybe we could work something with the school. I'd like to see that parking lot across the street west of the auto plant. Utilized for pickups.
I agree.
And, you know, kids need to be, the kids need to be going that way and out that way, and the parents need to be coming in this way, but the kids are trying to come down this road, parents are trying to come...
We've got to give a little, I get that, so it'd have to be give and take with them, but I think there's a better way to solve that, and my child doesn't go here, so I don't really see all of that except when I'm trying to get out or get in the neighborhood or we're outside playing, and, but there's got to be something maybe better, I just don't know. And you can't tell people that they can't go through your neighborhood.
Well, yeah.
Randy had even mentioned making it a school zone, which I don't know that they're going to go twenty anyways through there. I guess you could say no through traffic, but when are the hours, and is that legal?
Well, also, the speed limit in town, neighborhoods is twenty-five miles an hour. So it's already pretty close, yeah. You're not supposed to go past twenty-five in residential areas.
I think it's too far from the school to be a school zone, isn't it?
Yeah.
Probably, I don't know.
I've seen them pretty wide.
I have too.
As much as they're expanding the ball fields further and further north, I think that, I mean, there's, there's school zone signs further on Mitchell, for sure, so...
We could start it legally at Fifty-One and if I don't know the rules.
I mean, I think that's a good idea anyway with the expansion of the ball fields.
You have so many cars pulling out.
We'll have kids crossing right through there anyways.
Yeah, just something about...
It's a good idea.
I thought the whole speed limit all the way down that road is twenty-five.
It is twenty-five and then twenty.
Twenty for the school.
Yeah. It starts...
It's supposed to be twenty-five.
It's forty-five down there.
No, it's not, my ballpark is not go a mile, twelve miles round.
And I think, and I think that controlling's a great idea, but I think they're going to be there one day, then they're not going to be there because that's not their full-time job to do that. So I don't know that that's going to solve much, but I like that, and it's what the police are for.
Okay.
I just...
It's a start.
It's a start.
I hate to enforce speed limit laws with speed bumps and stop signs. I feel like it's an enforcement issue, and if people start getting tickets there, word of mouth would, would soon say, hey, trust me, I don't speed through Columbus.
Right. I don't either.
Because I've been on the receiving end of that a few times.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
Yes, thank you.
Go to the council report.
I got, I got one item.
Go, David.
Pat, you know, I'm kind of like Rachel, this may be the, not the place and time for this, but David, I wanted you to know that on the northeast corner of First Street and Oak, there's a great big elm tree there. The ground is looking very soft, and that tree is leaning extremely over the street. If you're on First Street going west and you stop at the stop sign in that intersection...
Across from Duane's. That's, um, what's his name's?
Is that Cofer?
Tree.
Are we talking First Street? Is that, so is...
Peter Horton?
West side of the street?
Peter Horton's?
Northeast, northeast corner.
That's Peter Horton.
Northeast. So is that a city problem, or is that a homeowner's problem?
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, that's, that's the point.
In my opinion, it's very, very dangerous already.